We call the meeting to an end. Roll call of Alderman.
Hi, sir.
Here.
Concella.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Anderson. Rudowitz.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Sillsby.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Cybert.
Here.
Martinson.
Here.
Elmore.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Musgrove.
Here.
Arlen.
Here. Alderman Anderson is excused. Roll call of the court of events.
Chief D. Clay. Bartley. Blanks.
Here.
Mike Flynn.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Jane Missis.
Here.
Tim Reddewitz.
Here.
Jim Schneider.
Here.
Leander Spearman.
Here.
Emily Folt.
Here.
Chuck Shaffer. Rob Saber.
Here.
Chuck Shaffer and Chief Clay are excused. They're on vacation this week. And at this time, ladies and gentlemen, if you'd please do come again.
The United States of America, in his republic, for which his hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public hearing this evening, so at this time I would open public participation. This time, if you do wish to speak this evening, if you've come up to the microphone, give your name and address, and try to keep your comments to about two to three minutes. Ma'am?
It's been a while. Three days of Art of the Square. My name is Carol Barlow. I'm here as representative of Wine, Dine, and Jazz, as a committee which is part of Art of the Square. Wine, Dine, and Jazz was formed to bring music, area food, and wine to the community, into the downtown area to have the opportunity to enjoy each other's company. It was the intent, like the Art of the Square show, to make Bellev another positive light. When the concerns of the merchants became aware due to the date, alternative dates were discussed. And wanting to further the goodwill and positive community atmosphere, we have looked at other dates. We have arranged to amend contracts, to alter the dates to October 19th and 20th, subject to approval by the city. We appreciate the cooperation of the merchants of the city in the past, and we look forward to drawing a good crowd to once again enjoy the pleasures of the city. Aside benefit, aside benefit, this event is exposure to downtown merchants, to potential customers. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. So, I know we had talked before, and I know at first you didn't know if you could get those contracts, but you were able to do so.
Yeah.
And, so this puts it the 19th and 20th, which the first weekend is Chili Cook Off, so now that puts two weeks between there. Is that right?
Yes.
Which I think, from the merchant's point of view, I'm thinking would probably be much more compatible. Okay. I think, aside from that, we do pledge to continue. We've had the same major festivals in the square for no longer than a year. But when this one tried to get out of the June hot, right after Art of the Square, which I did disagree with them, I think some of the concern was that we had it for three in a row. And I understood that. I understood that concern. So, this would solve that dilemma, right? So, okay, with that said, that's good news. I think that's a positive solution. Any other comments for public participation? We just have to amend, we had the letter in here, Frank, we just have to amend the dates.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Stuart Lanner, 318 South.
Would you raise the mic now? Thank you.
Stuart Lanner, 318 South, 29th Street, Bellev. The last two, around the last two meetings I was here, I was dragged out of the meeting on the word of a convicted liar. And evidently, she's got a place in her pocket. And here, the news reported police had arrested someone selling marijuana 50 feet from a farm store. Like, that's a big deal. There's all kinds of illegal criminal activity 50 feet from grade school, but it seems this person controls the police, or her mom's got some political connections. And Bellev also has exposure of Russian limbo, Bob Romanek, AM 1490 radio. I wish that news Democrat would reprint a thousand dollar bill, Bob Glenn story sometime. That's sort of interesting. And I had to pay $500, $500 fine for my yard, and all it was was a couple of small piles of brush and a pile of scrap iron that I used as my hobby. And it cannot ever be seen from street from neighbor's yard. The neighbors to the south and near both houses have been abandoned for two years or more. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else this evening? Hearing now, we'll close public participation.
What was the one?
Yes, sir. Got to be quick.
Sorry. Dave Shainborn from Lincoln Theater. And I just wanted to clarify my comments from the last time we met, so you knew what was going on. I wanted to make sure you didn't think we were against, you know, ending that, an event. You were voting on Wine, Dine, and Jazz there. It's a great event for the merchants, just like Art of the Square is. We love it. You know, I go to Wine, Dine, and Jazz. I normally bring friends who's thankful with me, et cetera. So, that's a great event. But I think what the merchants concerned is, and from what I've been hearing, and emailing, and letting Alderman know, et cetera, is the totality of the number of street closures downtown. And, yeah, maybe some of these events have been there for a while, but maybe the new events have taken over their statute. But the total number of days closed for events, or other things, pushes 15. That counts four weekends. That's almost 10% of the weekends of the year that you're restricting commerce in the city of Bellev. So, I just want you to think, before you vote on events, even if they're not together, that we need to come up with some policy on the total number of days that we want, you know, to do this. And then maybe some events may fall off, but I'm sorry to say that. But there's a lot of events that don't really show the pride of Bellev anyway. They attract a lot of the wrong atmosphere. And I think you can kind of tell that from the amount of police bills, or the amount of maybe police that are needed to control those events. I know some events have gotten a little too big and a little too out of control. They need to pay for more police. So, before you vote for that, make sure, I think we need to look at the event, make sure that they're paying for the proper police protection, the proper thing. You know, the chief is in line with it before we do some of these things. Or that they're attracting the right people to downtown. Because several of my fellow businesses are thinking of closing for these events, some of these events that are down here. So, that should tell you that they don't think that event is a good event for Bellev when they decide to shut down for that weekend. So, and that's, and I'm keeping that generic for all that. Me, most of my business is on the weekends, so I'm hurt a little more. But I'm just everyone, downtown, et cetera. So, you're asking the downtown merchants to sacrifice a lot more than merchants anywhere else in the city. You know, the merchants at Bellev Crossing. You know, you don't ask for 10% of their parking lot for 10% of their weekends or anything. So, I just think maybe the city can come up with something, maybe a little late now, I understand, that we look at this, come up with a total policy for all those events, and see which ones should fit, which ones shouldn't, which ones maybe need to be moved to parks, et cetera. Okay? Thanks. And, yeah, would you like Wine, Dine, and Jazz? Sorry if anyone didn't take that last month.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing now, we'll close public participation. There was one here on the agenda, my fault. We do have a presentation this evening. And it doesn't, it was just a crazy meet before Art of the Square. Monty Dixon, would you please come forward? Monty Dixon has just completed 17 years of dedicated service to the city of Bellev on the Historic Preservation Commission. And for those of you who may not know a lot about Historic Preservation Commission, that's not always a real fun and exciting and popular place to stick to the values and work through issues. And 17 years in that commission is a long time. And, Monty, we just want to say, and we put it here in words, basically just what I said, presenting to Monty Dixon in grateful appreciation. For 17 years of dedicated service to the city of Bellev while serving on the Historic Preservation Commission, 1995 to 2012, on behalf of the city, I present this to you and thank you. That's a long tenure on that committee, and we thank you for your years of service. Okay. We will now get to the regular part of the meeting. We have the reading of the minutes. We have the minutes of the regular city council meeting held May 7, 2012. Pleasure, pleasure.
I would manage to approve.
Second file. Second by Alderman Heiser. Do I hear any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor of approving the one minutes and having them filed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. So, we have the executive session minutes dated July 19, 2010, May 2, 2011, June 6, 2011, June 20, 2011, August 15, 2011, October 3, 2011, October 11, 2011, October 17, 2011, December 19, 2011, January 17, 2012, and April 2, 2012. I would ask for a motion to accept and file these as well.
Oh.
Motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Cybert. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Would you explain why the one of the 2010 has taken so long?
They were, they were held, if they were not brought forwards because there was either some litigation or property acquisition that was pending. And we can't separate out the minutes. I think that particular one, I'm not mistaken, I might have the wrong one in mind, but there was stuff with the 17th Street acquiring right away and different things that, until we had it totally done, we just couldn't release it because you, you know, you can't, you know, some of that was potential litigation, et cetera.
Okay. Would you explain the confidential mark on these? Are those still considered confidential, or since we're approving?
I stand confidential. After they're tied, I keep them in my office until such time.
Until we approve them tonight.
Okay.
Until, really, until the city attorney and I release them, to come to council. At that time, now, then, once they're in the packets, they're made public. But part of that, they're confidential because it's because of the potential pending litigation or contracts.
Okay.
Okay? And some of them have been gone for some time. So, we cleared up a bunch of them. We have a motion, we have a second. Correct. All in favor of accepting these executive session minutes as just read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Claims payroll and disbursements. Need a motion?
Motion by, claims payroll and disbursements filed. Chief, Bob.
Alderman, Elmore made a motion. I hear a second. Second by Alderman Heiser. Need discussion on the claims? Roll call.
Heiser.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Aye.
Motion carries. Oral reports from committees. Alderman, Martinson.
I would like to make a motion on behalf of the Finance Committee to approve the budget amendments that were ratified by Finance Director.
Motion by Alderman.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Martinson, second by Alderman Heiser. Any discussion on that?
What specifically are these the ones that are under resolution later?
Yes.
The dollars are in it?
Yeah. It's, it's the ones, basically, Jamie explained the other night. Some of the stuff was incurred money from, from last year, jobs that didn't get done. And that's why we had to have somebody from the Memphis traffic department do fiscal year. Is that correct, Jamie?
If we approve it now, can we discuss it in a minute and discipline it? I'm a little lagging on the...
Well, now's the time to approve the, what's your, you know, discussion, let's discuss it now.
All right. I want to talk about mine cars.
Okay. What's your question?
Was that in the new budget?
Which particular cars? The housing?
The western house.
Yes.
That has nothing to do with the budget amendments.
Yeah, that one there has nothing to do with the budget amendments, but it was in the budget.
Okay.
Okay? Jamie, you want specifically the budget amendments, just to clear it up? You remember what they were working on earlier?
One of the budget amendments was to move the city attorney's salary from the salary line to another professional services line because paying a firm can't be paid through payroll and has to be done through claims. The others were inquiries for predators we thought would be finished by April 30th, and all bills paid, they were not submitted very much money over the pay those bills.
Okay.
So, basically, what I perceive, this is a motion for the Finance Committee, which in that state, we do a resolution later, similar to the way the ordinance is with zoning.
Correct.
What's going on?
That's correct.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second, to approve the budget amendments that brought forward from the Finance Committee. Roll call.
Heiser.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Heiser, on behalf of traffic?
Yes, Your Honor. On behalf of the Traffic Committee, I'd like to make the following motion. We can have the proper arguments drawn.
Any objection? Proceed.
First motion, to approve a two-hour parking limit on South Oak Street and East Main West Side, starting 29 feet south of Main Street, and going 69 feet south of Main Street. Second motion, to approve the loading zone, weekdays, 7:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. on North Charles Street, east side, starting 63 feet south of, south of East A Street to 139 feet south of East A Street. Third motion. Motion to delete zoning zone on North Charles Street, east side, 85 feet south of the South curb line of East A to a point 115 feet south of the curb line. Fourth motion, to delete loading zone on North Charles Street, east side, from East Main Street to East A Street. Fifth motion, to add handicap parking spaces in front of 115 East B Street. The sixth motion, to delete the loading zone on East B Street, north side, a point 50 feet west of Jackson to a point 168 feet west of curb line. And the seventh motion, to delete loading zone on East B Street, north side, to a point 20 feet from West Curb of Jackson to 39 feet west of curb line. So moved, Your Honor. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Heiser. Who is the second? Second by Alderman Hart. Any discussion? Yes, sir. Number five, motion to two handicap parking spaces. Didn't we say, I had the Elmore's name only? You can't. We didn't, we didn't. My question.
No, not the department.
Oh, it's the department.
Joe Cash, your company, Bill.
Okay. I thought we had one where something's...
That one hasn't come up yet.
It hasn't come up yet. But I think it's, we, you can't, it's, it's not legal, Alderman, to put a handicap in somebody's name. No, that's not what I meant. I thought we, we felt it was a different subject. Never mind. It was for that title only. Okay, we got that squared away. We have a motion, we have a second on these, on these seven issues, seven items here on traffic. Any further discussion? Motion I, you made and seconded. All in favor of the motion, have the proper arguments drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Alderman Barlow.
Your Honor, on behalf of the Act of Development and Station Twenty, I'd like to make following two motions, if there's objection, I'd like to make one through.
Go ahead.
First motion is to approve a development agreement with ION Design, break bridge shutters and lines incorporated, without improvements to the existing facility located 309 East Main Street of the city offering certain incentives. The second motion, to approve an amended development agreement with Hensel Heiscamp Vets LLC for improvements to Fletcher's Kitchen Tap located at 6101 West Main Street. The amendment is limited to the extension of the project completion date only. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Meyer, I hear a second. Second by Alderman Sillsby, do I hear the discussion on those two motions? Roll call.
Heiser.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
And Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Cybert.
Yes, Your Honor. I have three motions that are called into the court. Very familiar, but I'm happy to not get involved in them.
Very non-perceived.
Motion to approve a Saudi heat bike, Nitro Seven South Pennsylvania, for a total of $5,375. Motion to approve the low-carry Nissan asphalt in the amount of $106,749.25 for a three-minute drive. And a motion to approve a proposal of oats in the amount of $36,720 from Frank Scott Parkway West, Lee Services and Construction State.
So moved, Your Honor. Motion by Alderman Cybert, and second by Alderman Concella. Do I have any discussion on those three motions coming from Streets and Graves? Hearing now, I ask for a roll call of those.
Heiser.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I ask for a motion to approve a proposal, I'm sorry. Motion to, for the fiscal year 2012-13 budget, motion to approve a low bid for the purchase of two housing inspected vehicles from Merz Ford for $29,445.58. This would come out in tip three. I hear a motion. Motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Heiser. Any discussion?
Your Honor, what vehicles are we getting? Four-cylinder?
We're getting four-cylinder vehicles. We're trying to come, we're extracting these for a couple of years. We had a pull-up last year for the budget. These will be four cylinders. I, I don't, are they actually Ford-focused, Bob?
Yes, sir.
Ford-focused, they came back, is the, so they feel like that they're groovy enough, but they'll, they'll be much more gas-efficient, and slowly, we've got to replace those old big cars that they're wearing out. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, yes, are they going to have an auto, are we paying extra for the automatic, or can we get a stick shift where it's a little cheaper?
I don't know that stick shift is any cheaper anymore. I think, I think this, this is a state bid. I think this package, what we have, is pretty, pretty reasonable.
Your Honor, this is, this is a state bid?
This is due to state bid. I don't know what it is. Jamie?
Muntz Ford does not have a state bid.
Oh, he does not have a state bid, but he beat them. He was the lowest price of Alderman at bid, so, and we did...
It was sent to all three local dealers.
It was all sent, I want to clarify that. All of our local dealers, they hit the specs, and some chose not to have been on it. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second, to approve, approve this budget item. Roll call.
Heiser.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, Alderman Sillsby.
Your Honor, on behalf of the Police and Fire Committee, I make a motion to approve the low bid for the 75-foot aerial wire truck from E1 in the amount of $644,295. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Meyer. This is a pumper ladder truck, right, Chief, just to clarify. And this, this particular truck was also, I believe, the number one on the list of specs that the committee's folks recommended.
Yes.
And it's also, and also, just so everybody understands, the Foreign Firefighters Fund, which is controlled by the firemen, has agreed that we have a contract with them that we signed many months ago. They were made, they're, they're going to chip in, and it comes out right to a third of this truck. They're going to pay. So, that's a very good partnership.
Your Honor, just at least to Alderman, or just...
No, we're, we're going to be coming back to finance with the final finance details. We think we can get a better financial way, but because they don't lock the, the numbers in for too many days out there, we're going to bring it back to finance and have a final vote on the financing of it, exactly which package we do. We're looking at, still waiting to see about the low-interest loan part of the tip?
Yes, we should hear that first, like you drew.
Yeah, so that's part of the reason, also, there's a, because of fire apparatus, there's a special state low, low-interest loan right now, or...
Zero.
Zero interest loan, right? I was, I was going to say that, but I thought I was going to have to be corrected.
This is different, this is the previous purchase we just made.
Yeah, yeah, well, well, the terms are more favorable than the previous one. And the previous one was good. This is just better. Alderman Hayden, your question?
Is, is E1, is this a state, all the state bid, or...
No, no, we, we went out, the truck committee put together the specs. And there were certain things that the committee and all of us staff felt that we had to have. But it's not, they don't really have a state bid.
They don't, they don't.
They don't do, they're, they're, they're built to order. Very specific for the individual city's needs, and their, their wants and desires. And the committee put together the list of specs. We do have an E1. The 2,000 is Emergency One, the 75-foot ladder truck, and they're very pleased with it. This is a newer version, of course, 2,000. This is 2013, that's what it'll be in 2013. Any other questions?
This bid tabulation sheet is fire. Please.
That's the three bids that you, that we got.[1501.99]
Is there a hair on her?
There's, there's, that, is-
So the banner fire for the 637.
Is it?
It's actually, the manufacturer is banner fire for-
Oh, I'm sorry, the manufacturer is banner fire for E1.
The bid tabulation, so the 637, and the amount, and the, the engine is 644.
I didn't see the bid tabulation sheet, you know, Chief, you know why it's that way?
There, there's an option page right behind there that states, uh, states minutes, because if we, uh, get a larger size engine in there, that's what the increase to 644.
And it was good that way, okay?
And then we're already taking the, the financing and, and the question of if we want to meet the trade-in and all that, that financing.
That Oliver, the final decision, the next financing.
This is just basically a motion to-
Is this a motion to commit to the cycle, cycle check on the purchase of the truck? So, yes, ma'am?
And this is the truck that we're purchasing, when it does go to finance, that we'll use the $150,000 for the used truck that we're selling?
Well, that's part of the proposal, but it's not, it's, it's, if that's to be determined from final-
That's what I'm saying, but that will be then decided.
Yeah, it'll be part of that final recommendation as we go to finance. Okay? Roll call.
Heiser.
Aye.
Heiser.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Silspie.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Aye.
Motion carries, Chief, forgive me if I draw. Uh, communications.
Uh, communication, I'd like to read both of them and vote on one with no objection. Communication requesting permission to hold St. Teresa's 5K race at 8:00 AM Saturday, August 25th, 1:12. In conjunction with their church picnic, they will have their own volunteers to man all street corners and for the setup and cleanup. Communication from the Catholic Diocese of Bellevue requesting permission to hold the Religious Liberty Walk on June 22nd, 2012, including a gathering in front of the courthouse or across the street is more appropriate, for a peaceful rally, sharing speeches, and asking for the possibility of some escorting and intersections for added safety.
I hear motion.
So move, Your Honor.
Motion, Oliver and Heiser, and Second Ballot, and Heiser, any discussion?
Do you have any idea how many people will be involved in this religious walk?
Last year, it was about ninety-nine hundred.
Oh, how?
It was almost a hundred.
And they managed to do it with the car in the district, and they didn't have a problem. And Captain Loth felt that that would be the same type of situation issue. We have a motion, a second, to approve these two communications, all in favor, the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have no petitions this evening, resolutions, I ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3097, 3098, 3099, 3101, 3102. Tell me, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
We have a motion, Oliver and Silspie, and a motion by Second by Oliver and Heiser. Any discussion? Uh, do you want to, is anybody objective, there's all read as a group or not? I vote on as a group, is there any objection to that? You do accept that, you two, if you agree with this, go to the, if it's a group, if nobody objects, so, all in favor to read by title only as a group, the vote, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 39, a resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close Route 159 in Public Square from 9:30 until 12:00 on Monday, September 3rd, 1:12 for the Labor K race.
Resolution number 398, a resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close Route 159 in Public Square from 5:00 PM Thursday, September 20th, 2012, until 12:00 AM Sunday, September 23rd, 1:12 for the Oktoberfest. Resolution number 399, a resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close Route 159 in Public Square from 5:00 PM Thursday, on November 4th, 2012, until 12:00 AM Sunday, October 7th, 2012, for the Chili Cookoff. Resolution number 3100, a resolution amending the annual budget of the City of Bellevue, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May, 2012, and ending on the 30th day of April, 2013. Resolution number 3101, a resolution amending the annual budget of the City of Bellevue, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May, 2012, and ending on the 30th day of April, 2013. Resolution number 3102, a resolution opposing plans by the Missouri Department of Transportation, IDOT, to eliminate the eastbound I-70 access to the Poplar Street Bridge and urging the East-West Gateway Council of Governments, the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, and others to oppose such plans, and can you, to you, to seek viable alternatives?
Motion to approve, Revolution 397, 398, 399, 3101, 3102, so move.
Motion, Oliver and Silspie, Second, Second by Oliver and Cybert, any discussion?
Can we talk about 3102 to the Moda?
Yeah.
Do you know how many other communities are doing something, community helps, will carry weight?
Yeah, that'll help, they, there's a number of communities, Mayor's Association is doing it, St. Clair County, uh, board, giving a resolution. There's a number of communities that are doing it, Southwestern County Mayor's, because encouraged, um, you know, Moda, um, this, this will cut off a lot of our access coming back into our area, and we still have hope, many of us, to someday see a, um, a Tudor Avenue extension from the bridge to Route 15, uh, which would greatly help the Bellevue area, so it's still very much our desire to promote that by taking this off and eliminating it, and take it out of the equation very, very quickly. Um, so this is something I think all the cities, uh, in St. Clair County need to be working for, and we have this in mind.
Your Honor, is this the rationale behind it, why is it a Missouri?
Because of the design, I understand, of, of, at the time they did that so many years ago, it would be easier for them, and, and they're looking, they're saying, safety concerns, but it would be more cost-effective for them, too, uh, if they could eliminate, uh, that, that ram coming from the west, coming, if you, if one of us here went to the airport to pick somebody up and still choose, chose to use the Poplar Street Bridge instead of going up to the new bridge and catching it, we would, it would get, it would no longer allow you to come back from the airport and come through the Poplar Street Bridge, it would eliminate it. So if you're on 70, you could no longer get back to East St. Louis-Belleville and this area, you'd have to get off on the new bridge, or the, cut through town and go through the E's Bridge, or whatever. So it's, it's, we don't feel it's fair, and I don't feel it's fair either, when, when the State of Illinois paid the majority of the money with the federal government for this bridge, Missouri was very lagging behind in participating, and now at the 11th hour they want to control, make a quick change, and it's, it's kind of typical of our friends on the west side, and I think we just need to stand together and say, no, we, we need this, we need this, we need this, we need this option to be there. So, I agree with what you're saying. Okay, with that said, we have all these resolutions that were just read and approved and seconded. Roll call.
Heiser.
Aye.
Heiser.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Silspie.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Aye.
Motion carries. Argents, as I asked for a motion to read by title only, Argent 7596, 7597, 7598, 7599, 7600, 7601, 7602, and 7603.
Your Honor, I'd like to postpone 7603, for purposes of clarification and the word.
Okay, so we're asking to take that out of the question, so we withhold that, and, I hear motion, would that accept, and you accept postponing the last one? We are second. I have a motion, I hear second, Second by Oliver and Heiser, motion by Oliver and Silspie, to read by title only, Argents as I just read, but holding, holding and postponing, Argent 7603. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Argent-
Go ahead.
Argent number 7596, a zoning Argent in case 25, Alicia Vaughn. Argent number 7597, a zoning Argent in case number 26, Stephanie Santella. Argent number 7598, a zoning Argent in case number 28, Julian Coyle and Roger Conklin. Argent number 7599, a zoning Argent in case number 30, Dr. Karen Alka. Argent number 7600, a zoning Argent in case number 31, Reginald McNeese. Argent number 7601, a zoning Argent in case number 32, Ray Ray House. Argent number 7602, a zoning Argent in case number 34, Robert Brawlers.
You want to hold on these individually, or how do you want to do it? Anybody objective, we hold on as a group, they were just read as a group. Hearing no objections, roll call.
Heiser.
Aye.
Heiser.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Silspie.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Excuse me, Your Honor, I don't know, but we had our motion, because our motion was-
Oh, I don't, I do not.
Okay, we have a motion, make a second, okay, so then we-
Silspie, who's second.
Motion, Heiser, second, yeah, I got you. Um, objection, if we don't, can we not go back and read roll calls and say, we're okay, okay? Okay, everybody's okay with that, we're good. It's documented. Um, this time we go to old business, unfinished business.
I have a motion to postpone.
Oh, very good, we do need to do that, thank you, Oliver Musgrove. We have a motion by Oliver Musgrove, Second by Oliver, postpone 7603. Any discussion on that? All in favor postponing that, Argents, to the next committee meeting, is that what you want to do, or?
Yes.
Okay, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we're on unfinished business. A communication from Arthur Square to the Wyandotte Jazz Committee, requesting permission to hold the Wyandotte Jazz Festival, and this will be changed now to October 19th and 20th for actual, and closure of the Public Square from 8:00 AM, uh, on Friday, October 19th, and reopen at 1:00 AM on Sunday morning, uh, October 20th, no, 21st, 21st, I'm sorry. Everybody understand those changes we just made? It'll be October, it'll be October 19th and 20th, the event will be reopened, uh, at Sunday, which will be Sunday, okay?
I think a bunch of people request.
Motion, Oliver and Meyer, I hear, who's the second? Second by Oliver and Hart, any discussion?
Can we, I'm not sure if this is the right place to do it, it, it seems like we are having some calendar issues, and, and I appreciate that, that Wyandotte Jazz was able to work with the margins in, but it seems that there may still be a little bit of tension.
Well, I think we're going to try to get it back to the table and we're explicit some more, but we had, we're down to really four events right now, and by spreading them out, I think that eases some of the tension, and we'll have to this talk. You know, I think there's a possibility if, um, one of the groups would ever not be there, I think we can eliminate, we can come back with a consideration in committee, uh, if you wanted to, uh, put a number to hold them, because I think with some of these events being 30-year events, it's not going to be real popular to just knock their legs out for under open.
Oh, no, that's not what I proposed at all, I just would like to see them spread out evenly.
Well, most, most of these dates have been, except for Wyandotte Jazz proposed change here, we've had all these on the same proposed timeframe almost every year, I mean, they're, one's always been the second weekend or the weekend after Mother's Day, the other one's always been, uh, the first weekend of October, the other one's always been the third weekend of September, I believe, so there's been a pattern, I mean, it's been, it's just when this one got talked of squeezing it in and having three in a row, it definitely brought some concern, and I did disagree, I mean, I don't support this, I'm glad it got worked out here tonight. Um, the only thing I will tell you to the merchants, I will tell you this, I do anticipate there probably will be one more new square closing, and that'll be in 2014, when we have a 200th anniversary, so, uh, I think you'll probably have a little bit of a struggle if we don't agree on that one, but other than that, I think we've been pretty much, we have tried to work with you, we've tried to have, monitor things, we continue to be flexible, trying to work on parking and police details and not close on High Street unless it becomes dangerous, and we're trying, and we also know that these events do bring thousands of people exposure to downtown, so, uh, I understand, we're listening. So we have a motion, we have a second to approve this, but the amended dates is just such. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Oliver Hayden had requested, um, to talk about Capstone first, did you all get the, we need to get other updates in there today, does that help you, Oliver Hayden, that you handled this here in front of you?
I just wanted to know for the, for the record, uh, Your Honor, I gave a letter to, uh, new city attorney, Mr. Flynn, as well as Carter copied yourself and, and Ms. Fields, uh, tonight, I point out in the letter to Mr. Flynn, that I still have, I don't got specific answers from you, and you, as one dimension, that you referred to Mr. Flynn and his assistant city attorney, to my questions from, uh, January 17th, 2012, as relates to, uh, Capstone. I appreciate the correspondence that you've been providing at, at recent, uh, meetings, but even in itself, reading this, uh, document, uh, Your Honor, that, uh, you know, shudders and repair deck joints are going to be completed, they will be installing eight to nine, you know, new drains, they will be, uh, completing new parking, and, and I raise these questions, they're tough questions to the city attorney, and, and, uh, they're tough issues, the bottom line is, uh, I still have aggressions and concerns of, uh, exactly where you're following our, uh, ordinancees, how, uh, people were allowed to get occupancy permits to be allowed to move into that structure when, uh, they did not meet, uh, all, uh, ordinances and housing, uh, requirements. I pointed out in the letter, uh, in, in short terms, uh, a, a question that could be raised of, uh, how equally are we enforcing our housing and ordinance codes? You know, a gentleman this evening spoke about the fact that he was paying $500 for yard waste, but Your Honor, you, there's pictures in the packet I gave you, of that roof, that roof. After rain, Your Honor, 24 hours after that rain, it was still full.
And I believe the one correspondence, am I not, Emily, I don't know, I don't have it in front of me here from a week, meeting or two ago, they had an issue with the roof, with the roofing company, the roofing company was called back, and I think it was duly noted that the roof repair, the drains were a problem, and they, they addressed them. And, you know, um-
They've addressed them since May 1st?
Well, positive, since May 1st.
Still looks like a swimming pool.
One, one gallon of US water, 8.35 gallons, Your Honor, and you look at that picture of that water on that roof.
Those, those pictures were sent, the roof's questioned, and it was brought back, and, and, and as you know, probably, there was other state, other officials out there about three weeks ago when they addressed it, and not a one thing came back to us. Now, we have not given all the occupancy permission.
I, I understand, John, but there are people, you allowed people to move in there.
It was never emptied the place.
I, I, well, that's even a question of yourself, that before starting this, going on, removal of asbestos mold and any-
There was different buildings.
No.
It's, I've given you the, the correspondence, I've given it to the city attorney, the city attorney, in my mind, has a legal responsibility to represent us, to, to make sure, you know, some of the, I point out in the letter, Your Honor may state that, that, uh, I am, uh, great exposure for the city, my position is I'm trying to mitigate it, I, I think that there's been some serious potential errors done that could jeopardize the, uh, health and well-being of, of people living there, certainly in a greater aspect than, than, uh, not cleaning up a mold pile in somebody's backyard, and you, as chief executive officer, and your staff are the ones that are responsible for it. This project was done with federal funds, HUD money, the object of that is to make sure that they're getting proper and decent housing. I point out a second Channel News story, Channel Two News story, that the people are paying higher, higher key bills than, than they ever did before, and the only rationale to be is that there's not proper installation in the building. So it's not, it is not doing what the program is supposed to do for these people and the benefits that it was, and we, as the municipality, Your Honor, and doing, we are the first line of defense to, to ensure that those inspections are done right, and proper billing, uh, construction is done right, and that we are protecting taxpayer dollars, and that is the question that's been raised.
I assure you, our inspectors are going to go back again to finish up. HUD's been here twice, and after their inspections, has never come back and had any additional concerns given to us, any recommendations, any follow-up for the city, they have never, they have never, um, put anything on the city, city that we weren't, uh, being thorough.
Have they been writing?
I have not seen how writing, but we've not had any complaints from HUD. HUD made the, and they've made the walkthroughs, listed all the concerns, and HUD has never addressed it. They've never, they've never come back with any concerns to us. The project is not totally finished, it's getting closer, and if you've been by recently, you can see there has been massive improvements, and there, I can't judge, totally judge it yet, but I think, Bob, probably have, they gave a call for final inspections, haven't they?
No.
No, it's going to be probably a week or two, and, but they, they claim they've addressed the parking, they bought that parking lot, they've surfaced it, they, they've striped it, they're, they're, they're continuing to work, uh, and, and our inspectors have been through it a number of times, and, um, the things that have been real concerns, they've addressed, and we're continuing to be on them. There's still at least 10 occupancies, I believe, that have not been given, and, um, you know, we'll go do a final inspection with a fine toothed comb, but HUD has not held up anything, far as, to my knowledge, uh, and, and said anything to us that, that there's any stipulations, uh, they were addressing the roof, the water problem, I didn't know that was, I was told that was being addressed.
My, my bio statement, Your Honor, proceeding on that, is then, if, if everything is, uh, up to par, then I would presume that there should be no problem, the city attorney answered me writing all the questions I've asked.
I, I really think all your questions have been answered, Mr. Hayden, I think we've had much discussion on this, and, and, um, I think the Oliver Ward have had many conversations with me, and we've tried, it's been a very unique, difficult project, and I understand the emotion of, of people, but I think we have been very, um, I think we, we have responded, But I think we have been very, I think we have responded, and we have checked and double-checked all these issues. And we're still not done, there's still a little bit more checking to do, a little bit more follow-up. So we'll have a final report here in a couple of weeks, and at that time, we'll look down the checklist again with you, okay?
And I've also given, your honor, a notarized statement that I want entered into the minutes as it relates to Turner Hall. And I state this evening, mayor, fellow city council members, members of citizens above. At the April ninth, two thousand and twelve, I asked the meeting, I asked the city to explore and not explore, not to expend one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to fix the roof in Turner Hall in exchange for the historical society to explore true cooperative efforts for our nonprofit agencies to take over this historic landmark. By this concept, the city could then self-destruct these combined entities for a dollar, in essence, save the city. Expenditures of possible half a million dollars in demolition costs and remain with the building as part of our cultural history. This plan was met with opposition, and this day, there's been no solution to the dilemma while the property of the city sits and decay. And will soon, the cost prohibitive revival agreement to come to fruition, save the building and the city's money. We have owned this property since at least two thousand and eight, and as one citizen has put it, the building is being demolished by neglect. Some facts on history. Bellville became a cultural crossroads in nineteen twenties after World War One. Bellville experienced a huge surge of population by becoming the home of many displaced Germans after World War One. These new citizens worked and lived in Bellville. They provided workers for industry and established small businesses as they participated in funding and laid grounds for Bellville's future. They built the fabric of our community, fifteen businessmen promoted Turner Hall, raising money by subscriptions. They built a building that is helpful for the National Register for Historic Places, which is currently on Illinois' Landmarks, Ten Most Dangerous Buildings. The Turner's literally promoted Bellville to the world, the gym is the largest Turner gym ever built. Many citizens have some connection, five memory or story to this landmark. Previously, the potential of over seven hundred citizens have despieled with the city in support of saving the building. Why? The building is part of us. We can make this a win-win situation, Mayor Eric, by saving the building and saving taxpayer dollars. Efforts to save the building and building conditions. Per my investigation, I have been told that the city had opportunities for federal grants, and we languished at the opportunities until they disappeared. Groups have been denied access by Mayor Eric to assess the situation, get an assistance resolution. Those have been allowed in reports that they have found the building in good state, clean, without very few asbestos issues, two pipes wrapped, some mold present, which basically grows on new construction materials. We have the means to tackle these issues in a cost-effective manner, if you choose. Mayor, we are now beyond Eleventh Avenue, the ball is in your hands. You often speak of the city's heritage, its volunteerism, and how combined made all of the city an all-American city. History will record your actions, or lack of actions thereof. Your standing wish to convene a committee. We are a month now past, four months, to be honest, since your statement, and again, no action, no committee. This committee, if you do form, Mayor, must have all the honor, who have the ability to put input and represent the city. They must act, and a must-act decisive. If not, another legacy of our city, similar to the old courthouse, will be gone under your watch. The opportunities of this building are limitless, as those people who took out the first subscriptions and worked with Turner initially built it. We can make a cultural arts center for all of this people in the city to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify one or two items, though. I don't know of federal grants, Eric, do you know some federal grants that we need to apply for? I honestly, right now, am clueless what they are. If there's something here, I missed it, but I don't know of what federal grants. We have marketed that building, tried to sell it, we've showed that building to a lot of people. It all came down to a lot of money. It all came down tonight, we make choices, do we want to buy a new fire truck for the city, or do we want to put, you know, just a hundred? And I can tell you, if the estimate was one hundred and thirty-three thousand to fix the roof, it's probably minimal, it's probably going to be more than that, and that's just one aspect. We made a decision based on money. We asked if there would be a match, somebody coming forward. Now, just this past couple of days, we've had a nibble, about two nibbles, just since Thursday, about somebody who might be interested in developing it from a business point of view. We're going to explore it again. We haven't done anything with the Turner Hall building because we've gone through a budget crisis, we've gone through projects that we've committed to before, and there's been nothing come through. I formed a committee, we had a committee, many of you served on it. Some of the aldermen, Mr. Turner, Jim Schneider, there was a number of people who served on it from the community. We went through it, but there was no viable options that came forward where anybody had any money other than city money. And the city right now, now, I said it last council meeting, I'll say it again. The next thing I think we've got to do is we've got to look every modeling of building, a new police station. But if we are to stick hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars into the Turner Hall without a plan, and without other private partnerships committed, we'll never get this, and the TIF runs out. Now, I am trying to get the TIF, I'm reviewing, trying to see about extending the TIF. TIF, TIF, the TIF is in, which is TIF one, right? And TIF three, which really is the backbone of all of them, to support that. We are looking into that. Don't have all the answers yet, if it's ever even remotely possible, but we're looking at it. If we would get the TIF extended, then I would say there's a much, much better chance to have a dialogue about could we dare invest some money? But without that TIF extended, we would be dipping into the general fund. So now we'd be talking about saving the Turner Hall versus cutting vital services. I've never felt that that was an option. This, we've had this discussion, there's no plans and no money yet to do anything other than it's the city. And we prioritize because in government, you have to make choices based on the money you have and the projects you need to do. Keeping the old policemen on the street, keeping the firehouses open, has been a priority. And we've done an awful lot of road projects that we're trying to get accomplished. So we'll continue, we'll wait to see about the TIF. And if we can have a development, if this, if this meeting comes up in the next day or so, where somebody wants to put a substantial amount of private money into something, we will look at that building seriously. But I can tell you, we're still going to have to try to extend the TIF, because no private developer, in my opinion, is going to want to try to put an investment in there that can't get some help from us. I think I would first, then you next.
Now, as far as Turner Hall, would, does that include the old swimming pool function with the old YMCA? Is that in the same package, or is that a separate property?
The old swimming pool on...
It was all one property, one...
On Eleventh Avenue?
No, on East, uh, West Manhattan.
It's all part of the swimming pool, which is, which built in the fifties, is in very bad shape. And that's all part of the same property, it's all property we inherited.
I wouldn't have rejected tearing that down.
Well, we thought about it, but once again, we just didn't have the money until now to do it. And we didn't have a plan. So instead of doing it kind of helter-skelter, we have not, we just, we just have not. But yeah, that is, that is part of the whole profit we inherited.
But, I mean, I think if that was torn down, that would be possibly built in there, it's going to be built, restructured there.
And that is truly, that is truly a possibility, Alderman Hall.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would say, I'm concerned that you kept using the word "we", "we, we, we", we've done this, we've thought about this. And I have to assume it's just a royal "we", because this council is the body that is supposed to set policy. We have not had a discussion. There was never a talk of, should we buy a new fire truck, or should we fix Turner Hall? This body is not privileged to make the decisions. Those things stop and walk.
We have talked in committee about a fire truck, the chief came through...
But it was never, all right, you have this big a package, and you have this many, the heroes on board list, there was none.
We just went through three months of the budgeting process and talked about all the choices.
And I waited in vain for you to call the council in as a body and say, we need to prioritize, we need to make decisions. All we were presented with was a done deal. It was not, do you want to save Turner Hall, do you want to buy a fire truck?
There's no done deal, we presented a budget as we heard from all of you, many of you came forward with different concerns, different wants and wishes, and we presented the budget, you had every opportunity.
But, no, sir, I did not have the opportunity, I really don't think you understand how budget talks are supposed to go. I've been very frustrated that you keep saying we've got opportunities, and that is simply not the fact. We have not got opportunities, I think, to sit down and prioritize and say, we are giving to this department this much money. We have presented a done deal and asked...
You were presented, you were presented a proposed budget, Jamie, what, February? And you were asked to come back...
But I should have asked in October, which department would get which money? It did not happen.
You were, you were given, when you had orientation last year that I held, the current budget and previous, everything was made available to you, and you've asked for many things that we provided, previous budgets to look at and compare. The information is...
And that's my point, is that all we're doing is just, we are never making the time...
There's a lot of obligations that we have ongoing that dictate when we have to obligate, make decisions at prior councils again.
But we do not, as a group, sit down and make the decision about what to do next. We are presented with, well, we're going to buy a car. Not, are we going to decide, hey, that computer system really will benefit us, we need to buy that before we buy the car? Those talks are not happening.
I disagree, they've been going on for a long time.
Well, maybe in your office, but I'm not privy to that.
Well, you've never been, you've been, you've been in my office?
One time. For you to yell at me, and it really wasn't...
You know, that is, that is totally wrong, and that's the statement here that's not correct. And number one, you've never asked to come to my office and have a discussion with me.
Because I was waiting for you as the leader to say...
My door has been open, and we have had many conversations with committee, whether it be finance, whether it be health and housing about these vehicles, whether it's been police and fire, about the fire truck. The fire chief first started talking about a new truck, chief, what, eight months ago?
I don't think it's the big picture, whatever it was.
Well, I'm trying to say there's nothing hidden here, and you certainly have the ability to bring up in these committee meetings, and in the budget process, that was the time when we had the budget meetings going on, the time to have open discussion about what else you'd like to see. But there was priorities and discussions made about what we had, what we were committed to obligations, and what we would still like to do.
Well, let's go back to specifically to Turner Hall. I believe you did last month agree to have a discussion open again.
Well, we did, and I told you, the first thing I would do is work on if the possibility of the funding. If we can't get the TIF extended, I don't know what we can do. The TIF's scheduled to run out in less than two years. So I'm working on that, as I promised you, it's being researched as we speak. Mr. Narber and I have a meeting again, I think in about a week, where he's hopefully, we're looking at that. I've also talked to some people in the state of Illinois about the possibility of what it's going to take to extend these TIFs, if it's even a snowball's chance to get another, huh?
I doubt it, but...
No, but you don't know until you try, so we're making those calls, and we're making that possibility. The other thing we're looking at is, if the TIF expires, because we believe that building truly is blighted, can we, can we legally farm a new TIF downtown for some of those projects? And that's being looked at right now as well, about the legalness and being researched as well for me. So before we can, there's no sense in reconvening the committee I have or adding to it until we can get those financial answers.
But I really believe that was the impression you left us with last month, that when we agreed to do what you wanted, that you were going to set up a committee, and now you're bulking.
I'm not bulking, we're investigating the finance, the finance has to be figured out first. If we don't have any mon, money that can substantiate this, how do you start a project of that magnitude?
And how do you answer that? You were asked to apply for some grants and refused to let her forth.
I don't, I don't, did I refuse to let you work on some grants, Eric?
This is the IFRS, we've already received an IFRS, and...
We weren't eligible for another one.
And also, the project was, wasn't really a sustainable project, from what I saw. I mean, the proposal that I saw wasn't... It was one of those things where we fixed up, and then the city takes over money that's...
Your honor, I will provide you with the information that was given to me as it relates to potentiality of federal grants from some citizens that were close to the situation, and the responses that I was given, that was given to them by staff. To be candid or not flattering statements that were provided by staff, and I'm not going to repeat them in this...
Well, then I would suggest you come to me, Mr. Hayden, schedule that meeting, and we'll talk. You called not too long ago, and we sat down and had a nice meeting about some issues. You know that that possibility exists. You need to call my office, you need to make, just make an appointment, and we'll sit down. And you bring in, tell me what we've not done, and we'll read, we'll either have the answers for you, or we'll look into it. But I can't, I can't sit here and just assume, or just read what I think you're thinking. I mean, you have to talk to me.
I understand, I had talked to you, it's whatever...
I know, but if you're saying you don't really want to discuss it now, it's probably best if there are particulars, then we sit down, come to my office.
And I just want to make clear, your honor, the point was, and I do concur with Alderman Hall, you left those people with the impression that a committee was going to be reconvened. Rather than that was your intention, that was the impression that I took. Let me, let me finish, please. The other thing I want to make clear in what I'm stating tonight, I don't think it's as simple as placing the potentiality of saving Turner Hall versus vital services. I think that's an unfair characterization that you're doing versus the other things that have gone on in the budget. I also want to make very clear, too, this is, and I'm trying to reopen my mind with the mayor. The past year, being on the city council and analyzing the situation, you know, you have to look at it from all aspects. It's not just the particularity of wanting to say, I'm a history buff, let's save the building because it has history and those type of things. I honestly believe, and I think that the city council needs to recognize, that this is not only saving history, but this in the long term is saving the city money. Money down the road, if the building continues to fall and neglect and decay, that eventually, if nothing happens, your honor, we're going to be forced to tear it down at a potentiality of a half a million dollars that may hit us, your honor, at even a bigger crisis, it could jeopardize public safety. So there's always two ways to analyze something, and we're in, to put, no other way to look at it, we're almost at which came first, the chicken or the egg? I constantly hear from the historical people and the groups associated with them, they can't get their group organized, put cooperative effort to come to the city unless they feel like there's some form of commitment from the city. And then likewise, you turn it out of state, you can't commit the city or any funds until this group has a cooperative effort to be together. And we are sitting here, your honor, staring at each other in a stale look, while the problem is not being resolved, and the building continues. And this is not my statement, this is a statement from a resident of the city that you would know, the building is being demolished by neglect. And that's where I want to put it, and I just want to add one more thing in relation to the budget discussion, Mrs. Hall. And we had this discussion before, and there's a difference in philosophies, your honor. I strongly believe that if we were serious about the budget, and we wanted to get down to the nitty-gritty of the needs, you know, yes, you did give us a package, we got it from the planning office, you know, about, you know, seven, eight inches, almost thick. And, you know, I tease Julie about it all the time, and emails that she must have a magnifying glass because of, you know, the font size and et cetera. But in all honesty, your honor, I think in these type of budget crisis situations, the appropriate way to go, and the appropriate leadership way to go would have been to have an open budget forum with the public, and bring in each department, set up specific nights, advertise, and, your honor, go through these requests, line by line, by line, with each department head there and his supportive staff, line by line, by lines, and we all understand, we all have a total grasp of what's happening, and to further decipher what is truly needed and not being within the budget. And that did not happen.
We did have a budget hearing, and no one has to go...
Budget workshops, your honor, budget workshops.
We had a hearing, and we had a number of public meetings here, and the finance meetings were all held in this bigger room, so we had room. And we took questions, and we took, and we went back and forth. Nothing, we didn't rush anybody out the door, and you didn't have this dialogue then, that many questions. So all I'm saying is, we're now into the middle of May, and we're complaining about a process that was open back in February and March and April, before we approved the budget. And there was no recommendations in particular from you or anyone, other than...
I made the statement, your honor, from the leadership point of view, leadership point of view, is you. I, you know, I'm not going to debate it. I can honestly state that if I tried to push to have budget workshops, my department head sitting there going line by line, it would have been rebuffed and wouldn't have happened.
Well, I don't know that that's the case, but you never brought it up to me, and you've never come to me with any specific questions. Alderman, console up.
This year represents my twenty-sixth year of being involved with a local government which has a multimillion-dollar budget, and never once have I sat down and gone item by item. That kind of thing is done with the department heads, because they know what they need, I don't. That is the way it is done properly and efficiently. If somebody wants to know something, they could say, hey, can we see a way to set five hundred thousand dollars aside to fix the Turner Hall? But they haven't said that, okay? Also, you are not supposed to be dealing in every minutia that's out there. That is not our job. Our job is to set policy, our job is to see that the policy's carried through. And I have never, never been told that I could not talk to you. I have called you multiple times, and you have responded quite well, and I don't know where some of these people are coming from.
As I would with anybody here, whether they're new, old, of my party, not independent, I've never denied a time. So I, 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 okay. Any other discussion here? Alderman, Barbara, any?
I just want to go back to Turner Hall. You know, I'd like to compare this to the Wylie Theater in Edersville, you know? I think we should follow the same steps that the city of Edersville did, and look what they have. You know, there's, I don't know how many thousands of people go to that theater now.
But they have, but they do have private investor, right?
Right, yeah, I agree.
And I, I, we, you may have remembered, because you had it on the Council's law, but we advertised, we asked, we've gone out for proposals, we've advertised in historic magazines. We, Eric, we put things out on different internets, we went to the municipal league. We have tried to get somebody interested. Now, understand, the last three years, four years, the economy has really not been too wonderful for people who want to take on new projects of this type. But it's also, we've had to make choices. You know, we, like I said, we've had to make choices about different projects that we're completing. that we're completing, you know? And, 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 and like I said, we don't know, if we take on that Turner Hall and we don't have a plan, it could be a real, real money pit. And, and, and we've gotta have a plan, and there's been no one come forward with a solid plan. We have had numerous meetings, they, they, numerous people have come to my office with, with proposals, but they're all proposals basically saying the city of Belleville needs to be the, the financier of this situation. And, and we just can't at this point in time, and, and nobody's, nobody's brought an alternative with anybody with any cash to match. Yes, ma'am?
Is this gonna end up being like the Belleville swimming pool? We waited and waited, knowing who will need it, who will work, and we know Turner Hall needs work. All of a sudden, may I please finish, there is no pool now. That was gonna be my next question. Where are we at on the pool? What are we gonna have for the people to supplement? What I don't understand is we're going ahead with bicentennial park, yes, there is a, a trust that's helping out, but then we got a grant or something that's gonna help because it comes up to 700, some thousand dollars. Why was this not started, the swimming pool by the park? Start, build a pool and then gradually add on to make the water park. We would have a pool by now, and we could always, we would have always been able to make the water park, make it grow as we got the money and had planned for it, but we didn't plan for it. Now, this building, what if someone gets hurt with throw, glass or something? I mean, we're gonna have to make our minds, are we gonna tear it down or are we gonna? Because the more, each, each rain we get, that's more and more water in there.
Well, first of all, let's go back here, come to the pool.
Well, what is the...
The difference, the diff- no, you're, you're accusing us of, you're accusing my administration of neglecting the pool, and that's not true. We worked hard to keep that pool alive from the first day I became mayor, and we tried, but we knew from the very beginning, our swimming pool was 35-plus years old, almost over, our 30-plus something. We knew that the pipes were very old, we knew that every year we had multiple breakages because the chlorine gas rusted them out, something like that, and we knew that we were facing a dilemma. We also knew that the ADA standards were, were being proposed and being talked about, that, that pool that was built really in a bowl, and, and as wonderful as it was, and most of us in this room had many fond memories there, was not ever ADA acceptable for handicap accessibility. When that passed in March of this year and those, that new guidelines were put into effect is when we finally had to realize, with the state breathing down our throat on certain issues and now reminding us that we had to come up to a plan, with a plan and with a commitment of, of considerable, addition to the repairs, considerable ADA improvements each year, now you're talking about not just 60, 70,000 dollars of pipes this year or, or a few things, you're talking of a half a million dollars minimum, the architect told us, of ADA improvements. That pretty much is a whole different ballgame. Plus, plus, the pipes are still old and they were still rusted and, and the, the tank is thin. We cannot sandblast that tank another time. Now, don't get me wrong, it's not my fault that the pool was 30 years old or 32 years old when I became mayor. That was just the facts. We kept it open. Now, far as the grant on the other part, grants are very specific. I couldn't, the grant I, we got additional to the Kimball Trust was specifically for certain things. You couldn't just take that money and use it someplace else.
But that's not what I, my point that I'm trying to get at is Turner Hall is going down the tubes the same way the pool did. We knew the pool was bad, we should have done something. Turner Hall is bad, the roof is bad. Every time it rains, more and more water is going in. And we, we wait something in and it's, that's it.
The YMCA did nothing to that building for the last several years before they handed it over to us.
But we've known it since we've had it, and nothing has been done. You have to agree that every time it rains, it's getting worse and worse in there, and it's gonna finally get where it's not going to be southward.
And I go back to, and I'll leave it at this, we, we each year are faced with choices. There's streets, we, we were faced with another major choice when I became mayor, it wasn't a choice. A mandate to upgrade and stop the combined sewer overhaul, a situation of this first phase, party four million. We weren't even told you have a choice. The state says, if you want any more permits for any building permits, you will do this. You know, you have to prioritize. And, and the money situation, also we've had to use TIP money. We're putting a million dollars of TIP money into the sewer projects so we meet the EPA's requirement, both federal and state. We don't have a choice but that. But if I had an extra million dollars a year, or actually over a million dollars a year, if we didn't have to put it into Royce's, uh, uh, monster project he's got going there, we could probably, that'd be something else we could think about Turner Hall. But we've got, we've got things that are mandated, but we've got choices that we have to make. When people's got sewage backing up in their basements, and we got roads that are falling apart, and we've got curbs and sidewalks falling apart, we've been trying to do a fair amount of those each and every year, and we've been trying to spread them out throughout the city. We can't just do one area, it's, you know, I tell you all the time, I gotta be fair, we have to be fair in this administration and spread projects out everywhere. But when a fire truck piece apparatus another year or two is going to be, uh, really and truthfully past what ISO recognizes for its age, we've gotta look at getting updates. That's, you see the endeavor tonight. That new fire truck's $644,000. That's no small feat. So we're faced with choices, and we gotta make good choices. I'm not against a Turner Hall, I'm not against historic preservation. Actually, I'm a history, a history buff, but you just can't, you can't save, you can't start projects and pump the money into things and there's no plan and there's no private money coming forward at this point. We could discuss this a lot more in the future, I, but, and I, and I am working on the financing with TIP right now. Alderman Carpenter?
Uh, Mayor, I mean, two years from now is 2014. We could be breaking ground at Turner Hall for redevelopment, for fixing the place up in two years from now. I think that's a pretty good goal. We could get everything lined up, through the Duskin Row, and I think in two years, that could be part of the process for our 200-year celebration, having a cultural hall.
If, if, if the economy hopefully starts to turn a little bit and some people come forward with a real set plan, with some private money involved, I think that's good. Maybe one of these things that we gotta nibble on will be part of that, that we're gonna, we are gonna meet with somebody in the next couple of days, or we're getting, they're, they're talking about coming to meet with us, they're, they've shown some interest or several follow-up phone calls. But like I said, we've got to have, we have been working with Mr. Betts and we've sat and listened to a lot of their groups, Judy Bellville's been in how many times? I've listened to a lot of them, but nobody has anything other than saying the city should put the money up. And the city cannot put, be the only one at the table putting the money in the pot. We can't, at least not at this point. Now, we get the police station figured out, a few other things, if that's what this council chooses, but we're gonna have to figure out if this TIP can get extended, because if not, we're barely gonna get the police station remodeled and the other obligations paid off before the TIP runs out. Yes?
It, it does beg the question, with, with no plan, no money, why did we even accept it though? Why did we even take it?
Well, first of all, I wasn't mayor then, I was on the council, but the YMCA was even at that time talking about leaving downtown. It was felt by the council then that it was very important to not lose the YMCA, the Belleville YMCA, which itself was pretty historic, that it started here by a group of Belleville people, uh, in the 50s and took over the Turners. This new facility has been a catalyst for a lot of things here. So that was part of the deal, and it was part of the deal that Dr. Rosberg at that time, and Mayor Kern, and that time, and others put together, and, and the final thing was when it was all said and done. And, you know, they didn't release that building to us almost 18 months after the new Y was open. I'd been mayor for a while before they released it, for maybe still getting things out of there. And then when they released it to us, we were just probably a year away from when the economy tanked, and, and, and we're sitting here trying to make sure that we can get everything done that we have to do. There's never been no intention to purposely run the, and we have, we have truly tried to be open-minded and advertise for people to seriously look at investing here. And if somebody came up with a real plan, I think this council would probably have made a heck of a deal on the building, if not give to somebody. But they have that show that they're gonna be able to sustain it. The city cannot fix it and sustain it. Alderman Holt?
Okay, I appreciate what you said that we have to make choices, I appreciate what you said that it is turned down private money, but I refer you to the minutes we just approved from last office. It reads in part, Mr. Sprague said, "We, the city, gave Gary Corrassik $200,000 for a second project, warm ditch on a project downtown. The project didn't go too well and Mr. Corrassik ended up filing bankruptcy." I'm sure you remember, the result of that was we had to wipe out $200,000 just down the toilet.
And, and there were some other circumstances that we, the council pondered at that time, seven years ago. We were going through the streetscape remodeling, we had the city tore up, we had a lot of businesses struggling, we had a business or two talking about closing. Uh, we felt, and we sat here in, in, in many meetings, and we made, we made a conscious decision at that time that while it was a gamble, that there was a lot of things teetering on downtown history, the future of the history of downtown progress was, was, was not being able to suffer a complete project failure there right up East Main with everything else that we were facing at the time. It was a decision we made, if you look back now, the lofts are all full, they're, they're totally full of the, the...
Yeah, and things are lost.
I understand we took a loss there, but we also, we also have seen downtown have a complete turnaround in the last four or five years, where we've got full buildings, we've got, we've got people reinvesting right and left compared to what it was a few years back, and it was a choice that we made at that time based on all the information we had.
Which you're trying to apply that same principle on, I'm saying it doesn't always work.
You gotta take each case, case by case. Alderman Meyer?
It's not really fair for me to say that I criticize and take, um, $200,000 to leave from, up to, to this situation, that we, we weren't here, we weren't, because you didn't even really make the decision, you had no idea what went behind the decision. So you, did you sit there and just pull something out of a minute and say that, that could fix the problem of the Turner Hall? I mean, I don't get it, you probably want a law.
But it's the same as, as Alderman Schneider says, we're not planning ahead, we're doing everything on a case-by-case basis with no big picture in mind.
Well, I, I disagree with you. You sat here and criticized me before about not having vision, and I disagree with you wholeheartedly. This council, this administration has had a vision. We've turned downtown around, we've got a new streetscape, we've got, we've worked with these festivals to bring people downtown that haven't been to Belleville for years and they've rediscovered Belleville. We've got people for the first time coming from St. Louis to, to look at buildings and come over here and invest and live. We've got loft living now that we didn't have, and we got more interest in it. We've got two new shopping centers, we got a new firehouse, we've got partnership with Lindenwood University. I really resent that we don't have vision, and there's a lot more that I'm probably not naming, so, yes, sir?
Mayor, I'd like to put a request in that we could have blueprints issued to all the city council members of Turner Hall.
I don't make it know if they exist.
Well, can we put a request in so I personally can give blueprints so I can see the structure of the building?
I, I don't, does anybody here know with blueprints?
No, I, I don't know if they exist, but I just want to remind everybody about the structure of the main part of the building, and Mr. Carpenter would like to say, it's a boat-trust construction, which is very dangerous without very expensive remediation for all those exposed beams in the gym portion of that building. Beyond that, you're gonna need a sprinkler system, we cannot afford it. Nobody can afford that at this point in time. In my opinion, as the ex-fire chief, I would suggest that maybe August Warner, the inspection deputy for the fire department, check it out, let him run through it, he's been hitting those codes pretty hard. We need an opinion from the fire department.
We can do that, chief.
Away from it for five years now, but I can tell you, it's, it's beyond the cost that the city, when they have to make priorities, can afford. Now, nothing against the Turner organization, that's a wonderful history, but where is that group now? It's part of history, so is the building. Now, we're stuck with it, we understand that, but we cannot afford at this point in time, in my opinion, to put what needs to be done without private investment.
And that's what we're looking for.
I think the Wiley Theater is a wonderful place, but that was a different situation. The building was not in condition for that type of structure.
You know, we, we saw, you talked about the, you talked about the, uh, the loss downtown. This council, Dorothy and I were on it, um, we invested before Dave became mayor, his father-in-law had the Lincoln Theater, when they were, had some tough times back in the late 90s, we did, gave a grant to the Lincoln Theater to keep them here and not lose them downtown, and it was a sizable grant, and it was done with much thought and consideration, but it was done intentional, and we helped the Lincoln Theater stay here in Belleville, and it's paid off, and they've benefited, of value. But I voted for that, Dorothy voted for that, in fact, I think I made the motion for that, as I sat in an Alderman seat. So you have to make these cases one by one, and you have to look at the time and circumstances, and that's what you're elected, we, we take it hold to do. But I, I, I just, I do get aggravated about saying there's lack of vision. We've worked hard to get downtown turned around, and for those of businesspeople in this room who remember, 10, 15 years ago, you could have shot a cannon through downtown and not hit anybody most days. It's not the same now. I'm proud of what we've done collectively, and, and there's a lot more work to do. But all I'm saying is, somebody's gotta come forward with a plan for the YMCA before this city council, in my opinion, can delve about, and I'll, I'll say it, it's gonna take at least $4 million to renovate that building. If it took us 1.7 to do Jack Schmidt's building, which is half the square footage and was in much better shape, to, for 510 West Main, it's gonna be a minimum of $4 million on that building. And, and I don't know right now, if you had $4 million to commit, does that mean we don't do the police station renovation or do, start to look at it? Does that mean we don't finish the other three legs of the coupler? Uh, and you can see the roads deteriorating and the sidewalks, so there's choices. We can continue this in other committee meetings, we will ask if there's any blueprints, I doubt it, but we'll look, I'll ask, I'll ask and, and we'll see here. Chief?
Your honor, I just have one more thing. You're always taking hits on you yelling at the other Alderman. While I'm not there, if Alderman Holt has only come to your office one time and you yelled at her, I don't know, but I've witnessed many times when she inappropriately yelled at you out of order. So I just want to say, for the record, it goes both ways.
I didn't yell at her at my office, but I think, anything else...
I don't know if she did and if she had to.
I will say this, we are waiting, we, we...
Why?
I had on the agenda tonight about going into, uh, uh, executive session, um, but we were waiting to hear from the attorneys about the hole, and, and, believe me, nobody wishes that was behind this Alderman name.
We didn't do motor fuel, right?
Well, we'd like to just do motor fuel. I have asked for a motion to pay the claims for motor fuels in the amount of $46,210 and $28 cents. Motion, Alderman, side, except for Alderman Martinson, do I hear a discussion on motor fuel claims? How about a roll call vote?
Hi, Consilla?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Rudgewood?
Aye.
Carpenter?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Sills, State?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Musgrove?
Aye.
Arlo?
Motion carries, is there any other, we've covered pretty much this answer to business, end-all business. Um, we will, probably by next meeting, have some executive session, I expect to be ready, I'm pretty sure.